Are you tape recording the meeting?
Don't you know that, ma'am?
No.
No. We'll keep it there. Okay.
I have never heard about that. But why would you watch this thing? Yeah, yeah. And it's pretty good most of the time. Yeah.
It is six o'clock. On, uh... At six o'clock, we'll call to order the regular meeting, December 10th, 2020, of the Trinity County Planning Commission. Public comment period. The initial public comment. During the public comment period, members of the public may address the planning commission on matters not listed on the agenda as within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission. Would anyone like to address the commission at this time?
There's someone labeled iPhone.
Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Commissioner, this is Justin Hawkins. Um, I just wanted to take a moment tonight, and I don't think there's another meeting this month, so I wanted to just take this opportunity to thank the commissioners for years of hard work. Um, it's been five years since I've been going to meetings, and I think all the commissioners have pretty much been there as well, so, um, the effort and time that all the commissioners have put in over these years have gone enormous, gone to enormous lengths to really help clean up our community, the environment, our way of life, the lifestyle, for the benefit of everyone, because it was a, pretty much, a complete mess, um, in 2015. I think there's a long way still to go, but the work the commission has put in, tireless hours, um, driving from the chair, driving from South County, or driving to South County home after late meetings, late at night, um, all those personal sacrifices, I just want to thank you all for the effort and the work you've done so far, and I think it's already made a difference in our community. A lot of work still to be done, but I believe we've kind of turned that corner to where we can look for better days ahead, and I wanted to thank everyone for that effort, and, um, wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and I'll say say thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing done, we'll close the initial public comment and move on to Agenda Item Number One, Minutes. Does anyone have any changes to the minutes or motions?
So I'm going to take them into the control room?
We can start out with August, um, if you would like, and then I will not be voting on September or October.
I move that we...
Yep, what, I have an amendment?
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right.
You didn't speak soon enough.
He raised his hand. Uh, which, which minute are you amending?
August.
August, all right. Uh, two questions. First one is on page seven, it says the draft minutes are not complete. Wondering what that means, that the minutes were about to approve.
That should have been, as we were going through them, making changes and updating, and there were several of us working on them. We would leave that note to know where we had left off.
Did you leave it on there?
That should have been removed.
So this is a typo?
That is a typo, yes, sir.
Okay, my second question on these minutes, I think it's this, yeah, I am eight. I believe on this item, Commissioner Stewart recused herself, and the matter didn't reflect that.
On item eight?
Mm-hmm. Which would explain the two to two votes.
Right.
And so, that recusal should probably go above... Oh, it does say it right above it. I beg your pardon, I should do that, I missed that, because it goes right below there. So I missed it, I beg your pardon, it is in there.
Well, I believe that it was in there.
Yeah. I'm right past that, so, my mistake. No other changes on our, uh... All right. Would anyone care to make a motion on the amended minutes?
I will now make a motion on the amended meeting for, for August to accept with the correction by Chi, uh, excuse me, Commissioner McHugh.
A second. We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 August minutes are unanimously confirmed. Any changes to September or October minutes?
Somebody needs to follow the board when they're voting, because I'm running Commissioners on Zoom, so...
Okay, yes. No changes to September or October? Anyone, anyone care to make a motion? Move to accept, as published, both, second.
I'll second.
Our motion is second. Uh, this time, we will poll our commissioners, because we have Commissioner Matthews via Zoom.
So real call?
Yeah.
Real call? How is it about the microphone? Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Commissioner McHugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Commissioner McIntosh?
Aye.
Chair Frazier?
Oh, abstain, I was not here for those me, meetings.
Motion carried four, two, one, four to zero?
Four, zero.
Four, zero.
Okay, we will, with that, we can move on to Agenda Item Number Two. And this is a conditional use permit and variance P-18-01 and CCB-20-46.
Chair Frazier, planning commissioners, I need to recuse myself from this item, as there's pending litigation against me by the applicant.
Thank you.
So, good evening, Chair Frazier, members of the commission, Lisa Lojer, Deputy Director, and I will be presenting Item Two for Director Hunter. Um, this is a conditional use permit, P-18-01, with variant CCB-20-46. And the location for this project is 3800 Barker Creek Road on a 640-acre property in the Hayfork area of the unincorporated Trinity County. So, this project, um, was prepared, and an initial study and mitigated negative declaration was prepared for this project, and when it was completed, a notice of availability was posted on the Clearinghouse website, as well as in the newspaper and on our website, and that posting started November 2nd, and was, the time for commenting was December 5th. So during the time that, um, notice of availability was posted, we did receive two comments from, um, agencies, and that was from the California Department of Food and Agriculture, and another comment letter from the California Fish and Wildlife. And, uh, both of these agencies are responsible agencies, and both have permitting authority over the proposed project, so they would be able to require additional types of, of studies or licenser or, or different things to be completed for the project. So, as a result of receiving those letters and the comments therein, they both letters requested some updates and some changes to the mitigated negative declaration as it had been presented. So, staff would like to take the time to go through those letters and to address the comments and to revise the mitigated negative declaration. So at this point in time, um, our planning consultant, SHN, has the letters, and they're going through some of those items that they can, um, complete updates for, and they're also preparing a letter for the applicant, because they will need to ask for some additional information to address some of those concerns. So at this point in time, based on this information, staff would like to make the following recommendation, and we would recommend that the planning commission conduct a public hearing as noticed, and continue Item Two to the February 11, 2021 Regular Planning Commission meeting for review. And that concludes my presentation, um, I will answer questions if you have any questions for me.
Thank you. Any questions for staff before we open the public comment?
Is there clarity, um, on the 24-watt generator?
As far as whether it was actually a 24-watt generator, or whether, um, that was a typo?
Yeah, DFW said, assume that it was a typo, and so I was wondering if there had been clarity on...
Um, not that I know of, not currently that I know of.
Yeah.
Any other questions, staff? All right, with that, we will open up the public comment on Agenda Item Number Two. Is there anyone that would wish to comment on this item? Any answers? All right, seeing done, we will close the public comment and bring it back to the commission.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we continue the side to February 11, 2021.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. Um, once again, we're gonna need someone to call out names for us.
Commissioner McIntosh?
Aye.
Commissioner McHugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart?
Aye.
Chair Frazier?
Aye. Motion carries, man, I'm saying. All right. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Three, Appeal of the Planning Director's decision P-20-30... Sorry, dropped that gamete, should have waited a little longer.
Good evening, Kim Hunter, Building and Planning Director, and I'll be presenting this item this evening. I did want to note that a memo was sent out and posted on the website yesterday, um, sent to the planning commissioners and the applicant and representative, and, um, again, also posted on the website, which includes, um, additional attachments related to the item before you, which is an appeal of the Planning Director's decision to revoke commercial cannabis license, CCL-624. The appellant is Colby Ford. The location of, uh, the parcel, uh, is 240 Olivia Drive, Hayfork, APN 014, 29001. Approximate acreage of that site, that parcel is 2.93 acres. The zoning district is rural residential, 10-acre minimum. General plan designation is rural residential, low density, and the staff's recommendation is to deny the appeal. The adjacent land use and zoning information is, uh, land uses adjacent to the parcel are residential in nature, um, mostly rural residential with different, differing minimum parcel sizes ranging from 10-acre minimum to 20-acre minimum, and, um, also rural residential land use designations varying somewhat regarding, um, the RRL versus the RR-10 general plan designations. The application for CCL-624 was submitted in November of 2019. Staff began, and just processing that CCL application at the time. The following timeline that I will go through, that's included in the staff report, outlines the events following the application's dismissal, which ultimately resulted in the revocation of the CCL, and CCL standing for Commercial Cannabis License. May 27th, 2020, prior to the issuance of the CCL, an inspection of the site was completed, and this was actually the second inspection of the site, uh, that was performed by Cannabis, Cannabis Division staff, and that was the compliance staff, um, staff member Daniel Marble. During that inspection, illegal cultivation beyond the scale allowed by the personal use ordinance for personal adult use in accordance with state law, which would be six plants, was discovered. The appellant, Mr. Ford, was warned by the compliance specialist conducting the inspection, that both the county and state-like cannabis cultivation licenses were required prior to legal cultivation being able to occur. On June 5th, 2020, Code Enforcement Officer Rob Barcelona issued a citation for the parcel due to cannabis cultivation without a county or state license, which is Attachment B of the staff report. At that time, Officer Barcelona took several photos, also included in the staff packet as Attachment B, of the plants on site. On June 18th, 2020, following the issuance of the citation, cannabis cultivation application was denied by the planning director, Attachment C of the staff report. The denial was based on violations of Trinity County Code Section 17.43.060A. On July 9th, 2020, the decision to deny the application was reversed, and the license was issued due to the fact that the applicant had abated the plants, which satisfied the seven-day timeframe to obey as stated in the citation, and also meets the guidelines of Trinity County, uh, ordinance. On July 15th, the issuance of the CCL was legally noticed to adjacent properties and in the Trinity Journal. This was an issuance as a provisional license. This CCL was set to be issued on or after August 6, 2020. On July 20, 2020, illegal cultivation was once again identified on the site prior to the issuance of the CCL. Based on this information, and a site visit by another code compliance specialist, um, excuse me, that was not a site visit, that was a drive-by, our code compliance in that case drove by the site, could see the plants from the row in the greenhouse, and verified that, that several plants were there. Photos were not taken at that time. Based on the information, the Commercial Cannabis License Application 624 was revoked by the planning director on July 21st, 2020, and that is Attachment F of the staff report. Upon receipt of the revocation letter dated July 21st, 2020, the applicant filed appeal on August 4th citing lack of administrative timeliness as the basis of the appeal. Now, there is one point I do very much want to clarify, and, uh, this is a procedural error that is also reflected in the staff report, and this comes into play with what I will, um, touch on next. The license was never issued, and, and so, there is really, the revocation of a license is misleading. That license was never signed by myself, I'm the one that signs the licenses, it was never issued. So, um, as a procedural error, the, what occurred on July 20, 21st, 2020 should have been an, uh, application denial as it was back in, um, let's see, when was that, on June 18th? So that was a procedural error on our part, and again, reflected in the staff report. But just to be clear, that license, um, cultivation was cited prior to that license, the period of noticing being completed, and the appeal period being completed, so that happened before there was any signature or issuance of the license. And, um, so with that, that clarified, and that brings me to the next step, that, um, should the planning commission, um, choose to grant, uh, the denial and, um, reinstate this, this application? As of yesterday, an urgency ordinance was passed by the Board of Supervisors, and that urgency ordinance, part of that is prohibiting the issuance of any new licenses for a temporary time until, um, until a transition plan is in place, um, associated with the certification of the EIR. So this is a temporary, no issuance of new licenses. New licenses are defined as license that has not been previously issued. So, in the case, if you should choose to, um, grant this appeal, then, uh, while the application would be reinstated, that license, uh, would not be able to issue until the time where that transition period and that interim urgency ordinance, the, uh, date, you know, when it ends, when it's no longer in place. So that's just something, a lot of things are going on right now, wanted to bring that to your attention. Uh, and with that, um, I'd like to touch on the memo real quick. The right memo here, and just go through that, uh, there was a comment received, uh, from a neighbor, that is the first item, and then, um, there is a letter from December 8th from the appellant's representative regarding the, the appeal, that's the second item of the memo, has several attachments, and then there is some correspondence that, uh, from the appellant, from Mr. Ford, that did not make it in the staff report, that is very pertinent to, uh, the process and, and what occurred during this appeal, uh, licensing timeframe and appeal, so I wanted to bring that to attention. Mr. Ford has a very extensive timeline of what occurred, uh, and that's the last two pages of the memo. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, staff?
I have a question. I understand that the code enforcement officer drove by, did not take pictures, did he actually issue a citation?
No, and let me clarify, so, so on, let me get my timeline here real quick, so there's code enforcement and there's code compliance.
Right.
Right, and so that's, that's what comes into play, let me get there.
So, so he, he was a code compliance officer?
Okay, so on June 5th, um, 2020, that was code enforcement officer Rob Barcelona, he took photos, um, he had a statement in his, his citation in the report saying, "I took photos."
Right.
They're not date stamped, but those were of June 5th, um, and so that was code enforcement. Now, the code compliance does not issue citations, and, and no, no pictures were taken at that time, it was just a drive, drive, you know, wasn't a formal site visit, it was driving by, being able to see plants in the greenhouse that appeared to, uh, exceed six plants, um, by quite a bit, but that, that is, that is his statement.
Okay, and ordinarily, would that trigger the code compliance officer to go back and issue a citation, or you just, ordinarily just don't have any verification and just act on it?
Um, no, this is, this is a procedure we, we are working on improving, um, and, um, so no, photo should have been taken by the compliance specialist, and in that case, the, uh, the consequence is, uh, denial of application or revocation of a license, um, because that, that, you know, they're working towards legalization and receiving their license, that's a code, generally a code compliance situation, not a court code enforcement. And again, this process is evolving, we're trying to clean it up and, um, have more consistency and thoroughness with the process, so, yeah.
If I may, um, will the urgency ordinance expire when the EIR is certified?
No, uh, although it is temporary, there is a timeframe, um, that, um, there's a timeframe stated in the ordinance, uh, with that's 270 days, uh, pretty darn sure it's 270 days, that did, that was an amendment made by the Board of Supervisors, there was a few amendments to the proposed ordinance, um, yesterday, uh, and then, um, or when a transition period's adopted. And staff is already working on that transition period of what occurs as we transition to an older program, um, you know, pre-EIR to EIR implementation, and, um, and the mitigations being implemented, it takes time, this is, this is gonna, uh, you know, we're modeling transition after other counties that have gone through this process, as we go from A to B, we, we need to smooth out and, and make clear and establish the guidelines of how that's gonna move forward. So, um, it, it may sound more complicated than it is, we'll find out, uh, but staff's already working very hard on it, is making progress, and I do not think the transition plan, hopeful, naive, um, will take 270 days. Uh, but that will, that transition plan will have to be approved by the board, so we will see. And it'll be a new board. Yeah.
Hang on, I'm gonna glasses here. Um, I do have one other question, well, that's actually, I guess, more of a comment. Ordinarily, when we receive something the day before a meeting, I do not print it out because I expected it would be here, and, and I don't, am I just missing it, or did we not get it?
We've got what she was talking about. It came up in real...
Uh-huh. I know it came via email, but it would be nice to have it printed, and, um, because I remember broadly what was in it, but not specifically. And if I know I need to print it out and bring it, I will do so next time, but...
No, we will have it for you, we apologize for that.
Okay, thank you.
And for clarity, the, the memo was a neighbor encouraging the denial of the appeal, because there was already lots of cultivation going on illegally, the water table was, um, a factor in that.
And then also this timeline for that. Any other questions of staff before we open the public comment? All right, seeing none, we will open the public comment on Agenda Item Number Three.
I would like to ask, because on the right of Flora, um, I am the average contributor, I would like to ask in the whole field, do you have a little time about the arrangement tonight, or would I just...
I am having a hard time hearing you.
Can you, are you okay? You okay? Can you hear now?
Yes.
Okay, my question was, as the applicant's representative, usually we get unlimited time to present, is that still applicable here, or do I get three minutes?
As the applicant's representative, I think you will have more than three minutes, I don't know how unlimited will go, but, um, yeah, you can present your case, and we'll go for that.
Awesome, uh, well, good evening, commissioners, I appreciate your time on this matter, um, as we've been waiting a little while to get this scheduled, so thank you everybody for getting this on the agenda. Just a comment on our late submission because of the memo, um, we were told Friday that this was gonna be on on Thursday, and I know that's the usual deadline for staff reports, so I do apologize for our late submission, it was a pretty tight time crunch for us to turn that around, um... It was a pretty tight time crunch for us to turn that around, explaining part of those things. I do want to first really start with the level of compliance the site has already reached. Not only a complete county application that took about nine to 10 months to get a variance hearing and then, you know, notice and going through that portion, hence why we filed this on administrative timeliness grounds. This applicant is in the final steps of finalizing a Lincoln Street Bed Alteration Agreement with Fish and Wildlife. They have their water port notice of applicability. They have a final well permit that shows the minimum gallons per minute required along with a valid CDMA provisional license. This licensee has been holding out, holding out on paying that fee for this hearing. And with a last minute surprise of getting this hearing heard, he was encroaching on the deadline of that application being disqualified due to timeliness. So he does have a valid state license. Now, one thing I do want to address is that initial citation. We're not contesting that. But that initial citation happened. The applicant complied with that citation. And as you saw on the county's timeline, the license was then put back into the queue after he obeyed that abatement. So the only time he's ever cultivated on this parcel was that time of when the abatement happened. You're welcome to get on satellite imagery. We didn't have the time of the short notice meeting to gather the images to try to show you. But he's been trying to do this the right way the whole time. And we've done everything correct thus far. He has his Waymasters license. He did his metric training earlier today. We're going through everything in the right motions, including obeying that abatement citation. Now, the next email we get was from Inspector Jeff Dickey that said the license will be noticed as provisional or moving forward. We are very excited to finally see some movement on that end. The next thing the applicant received was that last and final move by the county by revoking the license or, and Director Hunter's correction denying the application. And we're still questioning why. You know, with no proof of plants, with no valid site visit notes or anything to really show that there were plants in the ground, specifically also more than the six allowable we all get, revoking the license and tying this application is, there's no proper burden of proof to do so. And we are in a very sensitive time as Director Hunter stipulated that licensing, there's a huge question mark around it. And even though with the urgency ordinance passing, this applicant really deserves to keep their license in the queue. Even if that means we have to obey by this urgency ordinance and things won't be processed as quickly as renewal will this next year, that doesn't mean that this application will never be processed again. And it has a chance to finish that up and round it out. I don't need to tell you about the financial implications of people investing into their properties, including this applicant, to get everything to licensing standpoint. And this is already somebody who's a member of our community. He's already a local business owner that's looking at cannabis, like a lot of other people are, in a business sense. And so that's why we've been trying to do it the right way this whole time, including, you know, obeying that first citation. So I would really ask that we, we have the opportunity to keep somebody in a program, a program that's not going to be processed as quickly again as we'd like because of that urgency ordinance. But by granting this appeal, we keep this alive for them, for him and his family and for the employees. He's already lined up to get ready for whenever he can get that license issued. And so I really would ask that the county really take responsibility for bearing that burden of proof that there were plants, excepting six plants allowed for personal use on that property at that time. And if not, there's not enough evidence to, in fact, deny this application and/or revoke the license, however you want to look at it. The concerns of the neighbors, I think we've just addressed that in regards to all the compliance measures that this applicant has made. And we look forward to continuing down this CEQA compliance process this spring once the EIR is finalized, that we can get this new applicant, as well as all the other new applicants, into a better position environmentally. But so far, we've done everything needed to be done under this current ordinance. And we ask the commission to grant this appeal. Give this applicant, who's already in this very closed window of licensing, he's there, let's give him the opportunity to prove to us that he's here to do the business the right way. And I would welcome any questions you have and appreciate your time today. Thank you so much.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant representative?
Yeah, for clarity, are you saying that there is a misunderstanding that the applicant was understanding, understanding that he received a provisional license to cultivate? Is that what you were saying?
We're not, no, what I'm saying is the correction Director Hunter made earlier about there was no license really issued versus, you know, denial of an application versus revoking it. It's essentially one of the same of what we're appealing. We're appealing to bring this application back to life and put it back into the program due to the lack of proof on that second citing.
Okay.
Do you have a question for the applicant?
I do have a question. So in the timeline provided by the applicant, where it says on July 12th, his workers planted without his knowledge after the initial abatement and before the license was issued, I'm adding that. He said, "Workers planted without my knowledge because they assumed the text had meant we'd received our license." So when you say there was never any planting after that abatement, are those two consistent?
I'm saying that there's no proof that there's anything more than six plants that are personal. And that's what we have to go off of is what the burden of proof is to deny this application.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
Well, would you clarify what it means by workers planted without my knowledge? Is that what, what's that mean?
That means that they probably started planting a couple of plants without his knowledge, but there's still no proof that there was more than six. He's allowed to put six plants after a citation into his garden if he so chooses. But there's no proof that there was anything more than six plants that is allowed to everybody.
Any further question? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, I guess now we will actually officially open the public comment. I should have broke off that special piece for the applicant beforehand. So, public comment on agenda item number three. Who do you want to chair to speak? Do we have any raised hands? Seeing none. We will close the public comment and bring it back to the commission. Commissioners?
So one of the compliance officers is going to get used cameras.
They do have their cell phones, which are, you know, used for work and cost are covered if they use those cell phones. And we'll definitely check into a camera if needed, which is. But if the cell phone's still supposed to be.
I mean, if they're going to deny an application or revoke an application, man, they sure need to take a picture of the evidence or provide some sort of evidence.
On the other hand, I find it incredible that his workers planted six plants. He puts it in his timeline. Jeff Dickey sees, who has a lot of credibility with us, sees a lot of plants there, more than six, and says that's what he saw. I believe his testimony is credible.
I also think that there, I don't know what, do we have a report from code compliance on this or is it, this a?
No, unfortunately, we do not.
Just testimony?
Just testimony. Actually, another cultivator, it can be seen by the, you know, from the road, the greenhouses. And it's been seen by several staff members and noted. And another cultivator was asking about it, saying, you know, hey, who is this guy? You know, this property, honestly, he was very interested in buying some of his product. And so it's just an interesting situation. It was, it was, it was pretty widespread, but in our negligence, no, we do not have a staff report of those.
Yeah.
It's just really, as you know, I know you know, it's really difficult without, you know, it's not that I don't trust Jeff. I trust him implicitly. But it's very difficult without something concrete to uphold your denial.
Yes, it's a process we very much need to improve on and not put everybody in this situation. And we are working on that.
Unfortunately, anybody in law enforcement, any form of law enforcement can say anything they want, but they have to have proof to back it up.
In this case, in my, it seems to me like we have an admission of guilt in this letter. It says, "The bonehead move on my part, I can't change what's been done." It sounds like the applicant himself has told us that he had more than six plants. My question would be whether you, whether we believe as planning commission that that is a level for denial of a license? Or if we think that we should uphold his appeal because he said he was trying? So that's basically what it comes down to. I don't think there's any doubt that he had replanted his beds before he was licensed. The evidence in front of us, he said he had replanted, or his workers had replanted the beds. So in the future, I do think it would be nice if we had documentation. Or have code compliance come to the meeting and we can have testimony. A sworn affidavit would be evidence. So, but I think in this, in this actual situation, I do think we have evidence supplied by the applicant.
Unfortunately, he does not say the workers planted. Or fortunately for him, he doesn't say the workers planted by old greenhouse. They probably did, but we don't have proof.
But he actually says, "To have thrown it all away on a bonehead move made on my part." That right there, the first one was not, was not listened to test. It's the second thing, the second time they saw it. "And I can't change what has been done, but I can try to help you understand where I made my mistake."
Where is that?
It's the very last, second to last paragraph, last sentence on his last.
Because I didn't see this letter from him. That was not emailed to us?
It was, it was just hidden in all the other stuff. Yes.
It was part of the memo.
I thought I read everything.
Commissioner Matthews, do you have any comments on this item?
Well, it's certainly an interesting case. So I, I can see both sides of it. There is an apparent admission of guilt, but there's also no numbers involved. So I'm not quite sure where I actually stand on this as of yet.
Well, if you look, like two sentences prior says, "On July 20th, woke up to see all the beds were planted. Asked Jeff Dickey when he drove by that very day."
Which, we haven't, like I said, I think we have the evidence required to, that there was a replanting. It's whether or not we want to believe it, I guess. So I would.
I hate to be a hard-nosed guy too, all the time. But it's a case of you're not allowed to plant before you have a license. That's pretty black and white. He knows it and he did it twice. And it seems to me we should uphold the denial of issuing a, well, I'm sorry, rejecting it, application, I guess that's what we're to do.
Denying an application, yes.
Deny the appeal.
So is that a motion?
Okay, I will move that we deny the appeal based on the evidence before us and the admission by the applicant.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
Motion is second, any competing motions or further discussion? Seeing none, do we have a volunteer to take a roll call vote?
Commissioner McIntosh?
Aye.
Commissioner McHugh? Commissioner Matthews?
Aye.
Commissioner Stewart?
Reluctantly aye. I said reluctantly aye.
Chair Frazier?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, moving on. Planning commissioner reports.
Well, last month I went out to Indian Creek to check out the project from the Trinity River Restoration Project in conjunction with the Weodak tribe. And they see, I believe it's called Phase Zero. So it's pretty nice and stuff.
You're on track.
What did I say?
Weodak.
You're on track, that's right, yeah, yes. And yeah, I mean, it had been tried twice before and this is a completely new strategy. They showed where they had plugged up what they had called the hole in the bathtub where it was draining everything. I mean, they were in the creek with a dozer, which I was pretty, it was pretty eye-opening to see what they got permits to do. But they had dug a test hole, probably 60 feet up the basin from there. And as soon as they plugged it, and this was in September, it had increased, the water table had increased by, I believe, four feet that week. So it was, it was working. And it was really interesting. So the proof will be in the pudding, hopefully, third time is a charm. So go check it out after these rains this winter that we hopefully get.
It's a month.
Huh?
It's a month.
Yeah.
Thanks for that.
Well, I would just like to say congratulations to Supervisor Frazier, Supervisor Elect Frazier, and thank him for all his years of effort and work here on the commission. I've certainly enjoyed working with you Dan and look forward to admiring your work on the dais as a supervisor. So, and looking forward to your nominee for this commission from District Five for next year. So congratulations and thank you for all the good work.
Thank you.
Okay, just an update on a few things happening. Like I said, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things going on right now. Lot of meetings this month. As mentioned, there was an urgency ordinance passed yesterday by the board. Should the planning commission desire, we'd be happy to agendize that for the for the January meeting to review. Okay, we'll do that. The final EIR and accompanying ordinance amendment are going to be before the board on the 21st and the 28th. And who knows what, where we end up after that. But there has been a public hearing noticed for the 21st, which is a Monday. I believe the meeting starts at nine o'clock because we anticipate a long day. Hopefully, we will not be in here until midnight, but you never know. I also want to congratulate Chair Frazier and also we, this is our last meeting with Commissioner Matthews. Hello? And I've been here well, almost 18 months now. It's been a pleasure to work with you and we wish you the best. I do believe there'll be some recognition at the meeting on December 15th by Supervisor Morris for Commissioner Matthews, his wonderful job he's done as a very effective and very well-respected planning commissioner. And we won't miss him.
You're here.
I think that's it. Oh, we have something else. How did I forget that?
How did you forget that?
Oh my goodness, we have some excellent news. So we are making progress on the general plan and zoning update project. And that is we, Lisa and I were accompanied by two other members of the public. And we had interviews for General Plan and Zoning Update Consultants, three. Excellent firms that are interested in coming to work for our county and to take on the project of updating our land use documents. So this was, it was a really nice day to step away and concentrate on the general plan and have these, have excellent presentations by these three consultants that were all very well experienced with rural communities and general plan and zoning updates. I can't tell you who we've chosen at this point. We're very close. And, but I will make the announcement, I'm sure it'll be coming out. So if you don't have it seen it soon in the newspaper or are we happy to email you if you're interested, you will definitely hear about it in January. So we're, we're very excited about that. Thank you, Deputy Director Lozier. Appreciate that reminder and how I forgot that. So I think that's it, anything else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. And with that, we will be adjourned at 6:52.